So I will call the meeting to order. And before turning to the agenda, ask Kayla to swear in Lisa Max.
Councilmember Max, I'm going to say a few phrases, repeat them back to me, and we will get you sworn in.
Okay.
I, Lisa K. Max.
I, okay, I, Lisa K. Max.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful.
And I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws, therefore.
And support the Constitution and laws, therefore.
I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
I will, to the best of my skills and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member.
Execute the office of council member.
Of the town of Garrett Park.
Of the town of Garrett Park.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Thank you, Councilmember Max.
Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations. We will now move to the approval of the agenda, but I will begin by noting two changes. We will move the swearing of Jerry Lee Bennett to a position under action items after adoption of ordinance 2024-3 and before adoption of ordinance 2024-4, or earlier if it's she arrives and it's appropriate to do so. The second change of the agenda would be, under new business, my reinstatement of Parks and Open Spaces Committee will include initial appointments. Are there any other changes or additions to the agenda from the council?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear the last. I couldn't hear what you just said, that the, your reinstatement of Parks and Open Spaces Committee will include what?
Initial appointments.
Okay, great.
Are there any other agenda changes or additions? Hearing none, I'll call, hearing none, I will call for a vote on approval of the agenda, all in favor?
Wait, I'm sorry, new business, I would like to add scheduling discussion of the Charter amendments.
All right, without objection, that will be added. Are there any other additions or changes? I'll call for a vote on adoption of the agenda as modified, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Otherwise minded? Approval of minutes, we have first the April 8 regular Town Council meeting. You've all been provided with the draft version of those minutes. Do I hear a motion to adopt the minutes as circulated?
Motion to adopt.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of adopting the April 8 2024 regular Town Council meeting minutes as circulated, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Were you opposed or just delayed?
I was delayed, so aye, correct, yes. Flow on the mute button.
We can hear you, Stephen, and your, and your name appears. All right, we will move to the next. We'll move to the next item on the agenda, which is adoption of the April 25 special Town Council meeting minutes. You've all received a copy of the draft. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of the April 25 meeting as circulated?
Motion to accept the circulated April 25 minutes.
Very good, thank you, a second?
I'll second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote, all in favor of accepting the special Town Council meeting minutes, April 25, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Very good, those have been adopted. Are there any presentations from residents?
Don't believe, is this on? I don't think so. It is recording, but not projecting, okay. Hi, my name is Tony Altar, I live on 11100 Kenilworth Avenue. And first off, I'd like to congratulate Chris Keller on his election. I like to talk about mainly one issue. It really was only brought to my attention this morning when I read the bugle, and it was based on Joanna Welch's letter about, as she was running for mayor. And it contained several concerning points, and I want to bring these to the attention of the Town Council about the reconfiguration of the intersection at Argyle and Kenilworth Avenue. My wife, Kristen, and I have lived at that intersection for a quarter of a century. Carolyn and Ed Schiaker even longer than that. We know the intersection extremely well, and what raised some alarm bells in my mind was when it was discussed that a reconfiguration would make this a much safer intersection. Well, to begin with, there is no safer, there's never been an accident on that street, there's never been a pedestrian or car accident in all of our experience, so to say it's safer is actually illogical, it can't be more than zero in that respect. Also, mentioned that there was a stop sign or some kind of sign there that read "at least slow down formerly," or "at least slow down," and it was formerly a stop sign, well, there is no sign there at all at that intersection right now. And this made me recall back to the consulting report, I think it cost somewhere between $10,000 or $20,000, and it was approved by this Town Council, something I think was an egregious waste of money. And that report was a fiasco. The report mandated that we have stop signs in all directions at that intersection, and in fact, he looked at the architectural drawing for those stop signs, they were placed on the wrong side of the street. The other consulting report had a turnaround configuration at the other intersection, the Y intersection, which actually encroached on one of the neighbors' properties and would violate their right-of-way. So that was something we spent $10,000 to $20,000 on. I think that was a real mistake, and I think it was an example of spending a lot of money on consultants when basically a clear-headed council and neighbors that could be solicited about these things could weigh in much more effectively and for zero cost. And now we're confronted with a situation which I'm, maybe it's a good idea, I'm not sure, but I just saw the plans for the first time today for this intersection. And I spoke with Ed Schiaker, and he thought the idea was ridiculous, it was a complete reconfiguration of his driveway. And it's not clear to me that this would improve the sightlines at all. However, again, consistent with what this previous consulting report made an error on, there's an overreach in terms of what is being proposed. Before, simple things like actually putting a stop sign on Argyle, putting a white line on the road, cutting down some of the bamboo and plants that prevent the sightlines, let's try that, I think that might cost maybe a couple hundred dollars, I wonder how much this roadwork is going to cost, and I haven't seen any estimate for that, by the way. So there's a theme here, and that is consulting that's really unnecessary and expensive, projects that may not be worth doing. It's not clear to me that reconfiguring the intersection is going to help at all. I walked there today in the real world, and I took a look at what this would be like, what the sightlines would present themselves, and it's not clear to me that there's any improvement. So it's an example of where we can really cut back, and I would propose that if the, if the council continues spending money in this way, that instead of spending it, we get our tax rebate for monies that are spent. The second issue I wanted to maintain, talk about is the up to $2 million initial estimate proposed for renovating this building. To me, that's another egregious waste of money. I think you could build a small apartment complex for that kind of money, and I don't understand where $2 million comes in, and if that's the estimate now, by the time we're finished, what's it going to be, two and a half, three? I mean, I'm sorry, I just look around this building, and I don't see where that kind of money is really needed. So I'm very concerned about the way the Town Council has been spending money and proposing grandiose ideas without input, without transparency, and where people are kind of surprised to see that something's already going to happen literally on their driveway or across their street, without them having been asked about it. So I'd really like to see, I like to see the new administration, perhaps represented by Chris, and new energy from the council members to, to really think about these things in a very positive, cost-effective way, so that we can move forward and use the money in a more constructive way. And if we don't, if we have large excesses, let's give some of those dollars back to the town people who pay taxes.
Quick response, but.
Thank you, Tony, let me make two off-spaces.
Just, just to say that the Town Hall, the sort of, the Plan 4, which was the most expensive of the plans, has not been finalized yet, we're still visiting other possibilities, so that a more modest possibility for renovating the Town Hall is still very much under consideration, so thank you very much.
Well, Todd, I'm very happy to hear about that, in fact, I did draft a large memo, which I, I think was recorded with the Town Council about eight months ago. I encouraged everybody to read it about how I was proposing we could make very cost-effective improvements, starting with the acoustics in this room and going well beyond. I think the general theme that I'm trying to lay down here is, let's, let's think about these things, what can we do very cost-effectively first, and try them out, putting in a stop sign, you know, cutting down some hedges to improve sightlines, that, that kind of thing. Thank you.
Are there any more resident presentations? Anything from anyone online? Thank you, Tony, for your remarks, we will revisit the intersection improvements later under action items. That brings us to the next item of business, which is a mayoral proclamation, which I will make at the request of several residents, and also because I believe strongly in the underlying issue, which will proclaim Friday, June 7th, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day in the town of Garrett Park. There's no council action necessary for this, I will issue the proclamation, we will post it on various listservs and the Town website, but I would make this observation. The town of Garrett Park has a long history of interest in firearm regulation. One of the very early ordinances of the town dating from 1906 prohibited the discharge of firearms on town streets and roads. In 1927, that was modified to include areas within 25 feet of the streets and roads, and to incorporate a provision making it unlawful for any persons to hunt or shoot birds, rabbits, squirrels, or other game within the limits of Garrett Park. And finally, in 2001, I believe it was, we adopted a provision to essentially prevent gun shows in Town Hall. So the town does have a context for interest in this subject matter. I'm indebted to Claire O'Donnell, our Town Archivist, as well as Charlie Snyder, for some of that historical research. I think we're running in pretty good time here. We'll move to the Town Manager's Report.
Mayor Keller, Councilmember Bennett has arrived, would you be comfortable with administering the oath of office to her?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Bennett, if you'll repeat after me. I, Jerry Lee Bennett.
I, Jerry Lee Bennett.
Do swear that I will support.
Do swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
And I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland.
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
And support the Constitution and laws thereof.
I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
I will, to the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully.
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of council member.
Execute the, the office of council member.
Of the town of Garrett Park.
Of the town of Garrett Park.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
According to the Constitution and laws of this state.
Thank you, Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you.
And thank everybody for your patience for allowing me to listen to my son play the golden drum.
Well, congratulations to both you and your son, I hope you received a standing ovation.
He got more applause.
Good. Barbara, if, let's see, do we have more business, Jerry, you have to execute a document?
I think they have taken care of that, is that correct, Kayla? Everything, all the paperwork's done? Okay. Yeah, I think we're in good order, Mayor Keller.
All right. If you could proceed to your manager's report, then.
Certainly, included in your agenda packet is the financial report for the month of April. As you all likely recall, back at your meeting in March, you adopted ordinance number 2024-1, authorizing FY 2024 Budget Amendment Number 2. The effective date of that ordinance was April 1st, so the modifications that you all authorized in the ordinance are reflected in the April financial report. Just a brief update on 11321 Kenilworth Avenue, the former Yendel property. On April 29th, we issued RFP 2024-3, which was for Park Design Services and Preparation of Construction specifications for the Yendel Park Creation Project, that's the official grant name for which we receive state funding. Proposals are due on May 29th. As noted in the RFP, there will be several opportunities for community members to provide feedback during the design process. I did also just want to remind everyone that we are required to go through the mandatory referral process with the Montgomery County Planning Department. If you're not familiar with the mandatory referral process, these are plans submitted by government entities at all levels for any type of land acquisition, sale, use, or development activity. In the case of the former Yendel property, this is because we're taking what was a single-family home site and turning it into a park. So the County Planning Board reviews the plans on an advisory basis and typically takes one of three possible actions, approval without comments, approval with comments, or denial. As stated in the RFP, we are including an informal consultation with county planning staff to review several concept designs before submission of the formal mandatory referral application. I'm sorry, yes, you will need to go to the microphone. It should be on.
Could you speak a little slower and more carefully for us to understand what you're saying?
Certainly, sir.
Acoustics in this.
Are not great.
Place has never been good, and it's almost impossible to understand what you're saying, it would be nice if you could speak slowly and clearly, thank you.
Certainly, sir. No, it's running through the speakers, the TV, that's correct. Regarding Town Hall, the short part of this is that on April 25th, we did receive a notification from Congressman Raskin's office that their portal for community funding project applications was open. The long and the short of it is, there was no eligible project category for which we could seek funding for the Town Hall renovation. There was one possibility that I explored with Congressman Raskin's staff, essentially, under the current House Majority Appropriation Guidelines, any building that is used for the general conduct of government, which means holding any legislative meetings in a space basically excludes that project for consideration. So I think at this point, we have exhausted all the possibilities for current congressional funding for Town Hall. We will hear back in, no later than the fall, in all likelihood, as to whether or not our application on the Senate side was successful or not.
How much was that for, Barb?
It was $500,000.
Barb, would you mind clarifying, because I'm not sure if what I heard matched the written report you provided? Is it that you've already been informed that we won't qualify, or is it that you're not sure if we'll qualify based on that?
We do not qualify, I spoke to a member of Congressman Raskin's office, it'll be on the 26th, because as I scanned the available categories, there did not seem to be a project. We talked about a US Housing and Urban Development Program called EDI, Economic Development Initiative. That exclusion was clearly noted, but I tried to highlight the community aspects of the building, and they told me to go ahead and file an application, which I did. I then received a call last Thursday night on my drive home. That basically, given the guidelines and the fact that this building was used for legislative meetings, that there was no way it would be getting out of committee. Thank you. So that door is officially closed, Congressman Raskin will not be taking anything forward. Concerning the renovation of the Town Office, as you all know, we were kind of stuck in a holding pattern for a considerable period of time because of permitting issues with Montgomery County Department of Permitting Services, I'm happy to say that with the permits in hand, our contractor was able to get back to work fairly quickly, and we thank him for his patience with that. At long last, it's been about a year and a half, but we are finally at a place where we are getting signatures on the memorandum of understanding with the State Highway Administration for Strathmore Avenue. Prior to leaving office, Mayor Welch signed on behalf of the town, this action was authorized by the Town Council back in January of 2024. So the document is currently being routed through the state officials, and once we have that, we will be able to proceed with tree pruning on Strathmore Avenue. Lastly, just wanted to highlight some of the activities of our great maintenance team, they did complete the spring tree planting project. Obviously, our newly planted trees will require ongoing watering by the team to ensure their survival. At the request of the town's consulting arper, they are continuing to remove small invasive trees and shrubs that are located on town-owned property and town right-of-way. Certainly, they're being kept quite busy with mowing and weeding. And last, I wanted to express my appreciation to our maintenance supervisor, George Miller, who basically oversaw the site and drainage improvements project at the community center. So that concludes my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have.
So a quick question for you, did we end up with this MOU for SHA, did that include getting paid for doing the maintenance?
I'm sorry, Phil, I didn't hear.
Did the SHA MOU include getting paid for mowing the grass and that sort of thing?
Yeah, there's a certain number of cycles that the state will pay for, which obviously are our desire to keep that property looking nice exceeds the number of cycles they will pay for. The motion that you all passed back in January to authorize Mayor Welch to sign the MOU, you may recall that there was a concern about the removal of dead, dying, or diseased trees, or those that were struck by vehicular traffic. The state did agree to make that change, that they would accept the financial responsibility for removing trees under those circumstances. Any other questions from anyone? Thank you.
Oh, is the money that we're going to get for the work that we do for the state highway reflected in the budget?
It is.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. It's not on the agenda, but I gather my being out of town was fortuitous, and we had a tree across Knowles. One of the early things I will do is establish contact with the State Highway Administration and see if we can get better attention to trees within the state right-of-way that are not part of that MOU. I believe the state removed potentially hazardous trees on the hillside of Knowles, but this apparently fell from the other side. All right. We will move then to the action items, starting with the one-year contract extension for pre-service companies to get this on the table. I will entertain a motion to authorize the contract extensions.
I move to, this is Jerry Lee Bennett, I move to authorize the contract extensions.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there a discussion? Barbara, do you want to start with a brief summary?
Certainly, so the contracts in question were awarded. Certainly, the contracts in question were approved by the Town Council in June of 2021. The three companies that were awarded contracts were Bartlett Tree Experts, Empire Landscape, and Save a Tree. The initial term of each of those contracts was three years, running from July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2024. Each of those contracts can be extended by the town in its discretion for up to three additional terms of one year each.
It's been moved, seconded, and the Town Manager has summarized the nature of the issue, is there any discussion?
We have a question from the audience.
Very good, if you'll name an address.
Adam Darkins, 10902 Clennett Avenue, Garrett Park. My question is just, having been on the group that reviewed the initial contracts, and also having been involved in some of the works done, I have no issues with the companies whatsoever. What I do ask is what has been the formal process of contract monitoring? Because, for example, some of the work that was done on one of the contracts was 14 months late getting it done. So getting the actual, the monitoring of these contracts, I think is something, in my opinion, it seems the town is deficient at. I particularly have an interest in that I think we're very fortunate with the wonderful trees that we have. However, I think there's a very considerable focus on what they look like and planting exotic species, as opposed to tree health, which, in my opinion, and my experience, seems to be very low-down. And therefore, I think it's really important, for obvious reasons, the town has to contract out, but in doing so, I just have some concerns. So my question is, is there a process, and if so, can we very briefly hear what it is? And if it's a concerned resident, I want to see that monitoring process say tomorrow, I could get views of the documentation you've used to make this decision, thank you.
So, all right, we have one.
Jerry Lee, as the council liaison, do you want to address that, I could also make some observations.
Chris, do you want to take another resident question first, and then that way we can address all resident questions at one time? Your preference.
Same action item, correct?
Yes.
Chris, do we understand correctly, you can't see the audience, so we have to point out when the audience.
Not, not until they're actually at the, at the mic.
So we'll do that, then.
Yeah.
Hi, Tony Altar, 11100 Kenilworth Avenue. I just wanted.
I just wanted to add one thing, what Mr. Darkin said. And I noticed that on Kennelworth, there were a lot of trees were trimmed very high up and it was quite unsightly. And I spoke with Phil Normandy about this and he agreed that they were overzealous. It looked like not a very good job. So I'm just pointing out if the same company is being rehired, please draw this to their attention as part of the negotiations that.
May I ask a question? Was this the work that was done fairly recently in the last couple of months?
No, I think it was about a year ago.
About a year ago? Okay.
Yeah. So it's just a little bit of a bargaining chip. You know, and within the negotiation, maybe it's a different company. That would be great from my perspective. On the other point, and I'm just brainstorming here a little bit, but you know, cutting down or trimming trees by the owners on our own properties is a tremendous financial burden. Thousands of dollars per tree and it's a common thing. I'm just thinking out loud here, but is there any way, or maybe it's not even legal, but is there any way to negotiate with this company that we do select that perhaps they would give a discount to Garrett Park residents for tree work on our own properties? Maybe that's a way that the residents can save hundreds, if not maybe thousands of dollars for what, you know, is often a $2,000, $3,000 expense. So maybe another thing to consider, if it's a legal thing to do, it may not be ethical or legal to throw that into the mix. But perhaps that's something that could be considered when you're talking to these three different parties. Thank you.
Race, one other question?
In general, the question of bidding the contracts, I mean, we're giving a one-year extension as opposed to bidding it out. How, I mean, I guess the question is just why, I mean, maybe you know, the bidding it out would seem to be also a way to address some of these questions.
Yeah, I think you have basically two options. I will say personally, I've been spending a lot of my time on Town Hall grant applications, so there's only so many hours in a day. If you're not comfortable extending these contracts, which would be a continuation of the terms under which they were originally authorized back in 2021, you could opt not to extend the contracts and direct staff to bid them out. That would leave the town in a position where we have no tree company under contract. And certainly, I know there's some work that is, once we get the state MOU signed, we were planning to do some work on Strathmore. So that will obviously be put off until a new contract is in place. And Mr. Normandy has been putting together a list to basically have pruning work done after the new fiscal year starts on July 1. That would similarly be delayed. My biggest concern is if we have a storm and we don't have a tree company under contract to remove any damaged trees. But certainly, it's your decision as a council how you wish to proceed.
Yeah, and if I could comment on that suggestion, I think that the contracts were originally structured to have the option years so that if the town was generally satisfied with the work and if the contractor, contractors, because there are three, were willing to continue under the same terms, we could continue on, but it would give the town flexibility if we were in a position that we wanted to rebid the contracts. But I personally think it would be a loss of efficiency. And if we had wanted to bid them out, we would have wanted to start that process sooner. I did check in with the arborist and the committee chair about their view of the contracts and the arborist mentioned that he's been working with the town office on any any comments or concerns with one of the three. But generally, they meet the requirements and they've been able to balance the work to make sure that the more complex work goes to the more responsible contract of the three. We do use three different contracts, so they divide the work up and balance it around based on type of work most suitable to their equipment, their experience base and our experience base with their performance. In terms of Adams specifically comments, I'm not sure which the specifics of the 14-month delay, if, I don't know if you are, Barb. So I'm not sure whether we could address, I'm not sure whether we could address it here if we're not sure what the delay was.
My question is very specific. Is there a process for objectively monitoring the contract? Yes or no? If so, what are the data on which, because I don't think, it's a question of whether you belong or otherwise. My concerns are the way in which the contract is being monitored. That as far as I'm aware, there is no process. So if you're making decisions and making arbitrary ad hoc judgments against one vendor versus another, where is the data? So my question was specific, is there a formal process? Because it was recommended there was. Is that objective? If so, can I see the data in the next couple of days of what these decisions being made on, on that objective data? I had concerns about subjective data that was really all over the place.
So my only awareness of a delay was in the contract being awarded originally for the for the invasives, just for the general understanding, not the contractor not doing the work, but I could be wrong. I understand. I just want to state for the record because it's a pretty long period of time for a contractor to delay the work.
Right, and I believe the work in question was actually not performed by any of these three companies. It was a separate company specifically hired to do some invasive's work. No, no, I'm.
I can't, I can't hear the colloquy. I can't hear the colloquy when.
Right, right. Okay, so Barb, would you mind giving a quick description of how the town oversees the contract?
Certainly. So the scope of work that is performed by any of these three companies is put together by Mr. Normandy as the town's arborist. We then get pricing from whichever company that we believe is best suited for that work. Mr. Normandy reviews that pricing and then goes back to the company if there's other questions. And there have been at times adjustments in the pricing, whether that was a misunderstanding about the nature of the work or just Mr. Normandy sort of pushing back about the time involved.
And if I may interject there, the Arboretum Committee reviews those scopes before they go for the pricing.
So the Arboretum Committee minutes would be perhaps.
Right, but they review the scope of work, not the monitoring. Just for clarity, just for clarity.
Once, once the work is, the tree service company, whichever one it is, has indicated that they have completed the work in question, Mr. Normandy then conducts an inspection and basically asks the town's arborist, he either signs off that the work was performed satisfactorily or if he has any concerns, he then contacts the tree service company and basically shares with them any concerns and any corrective work that needs to be taken.
And he does that for every one of the items that are performed under the contract? And is there a written record of that?
The only written record I would have would be if a copy of the email that Mr. Normandy copied on those sent back to the tree service company.
That, for the corrections, but the pre-database also keeps track.
Yes, yes.
So not having been, so just again, what I asked for is, is there a process? And secondly, what's the objective data, having recommended very strongly that a subjective process that was ad hoc and made no sense, given the contracting process? So I think if you're going to re-contract, extend the things that may well have to. But again, it seems to me you're in a position of not having a way of monitoring the contracts. So I cannot see something tomorrow that you've put together a set of data that means that you can actually say and compare one with the other and say, this is the performance otherwise of what the contracts are. That's what I'm hearing.
That is correct.
Good. Thank you.
So can we have a motion to go ahead and extend the contract, but to raise this issue earlier next year in time to consider rebidding? That is, instead of raising it in May, maybe, what would it be, February? Or, you know, in time to get bids and to consider the monitoring part of this.
Right, so the question would be to check in with the committee and Mr. Normandy on the quality of the work and perhaps also the maintenance team, because they also observe a lot of
They do.
Issues.
Yeah, my suggestion, Todd, would be that if, if the council's desire is that we only exercise one of the three optional extensions that you give that direction tonight, because that staff would then back into the date in which we would need to issue the RFP, have it come back to council for approval before, for an effective date of July 1st of 2025.
You were asking us to do a single extension.
That's correct. That's correct.
For all.
I was just trying to respond.
For all three contractors.
Correct. I was just trying to respond to Todd's question. If, if the desire is to have this bid out so that you have bids to review for an effective date of July 1st of 2025, I think the sooner that direction can be given would be helpful.
I mean, I don't know if we want to go, I, I think we want to evaluate more concertedly how this is going and whether to consider bidding it out next year. I wouldn't want to go so far as to ask to bid it out at this time. But how would we have a formal process of investigating whether we want to do that?
I think you can ask the Arboretum Committee to put that on their agenda for the next month, whether they would like to make a recommendation to the town, one way or another, over the next three months or something like that.
Yeah, I think that would.
Can we make a motion to that effect then?
Certainly.
If you can, you can move to amend this motion, but it's, I, I wouldn't recommend it. Just, let's pass this motion.
All right.
Yeah, I think that's a separate action.
Well, they can formally make that.
Contract, these contracts for, for one year. I, I don't have a role in this. I'm just the presiding officer, but I will tell you in 14 years as an elected official, 10 on the council and four as mayor, I was probably involved with transitions to new tree companies on at least a half a dozen occasions. It takes at least three years for a company to accustomed itself to the unique requirements of Garrett Park. And that's an overused term, but Garrett Park truly is unique in the type and number of trees it has and the kind of care it demands from its contract arborists. And every time you change, you have to break in a new one. I, that's, that goes more to whether we want to bid competitively for a new company next year. For the immediate purpose of this motion, my recommendation is that you pass it, that we more closely monitor over the coming year, the three, as Jerry Lee observed, each has slightly different strengths. We are required to keep more and better records than we were 30 years ago because we have to report to the State Department of Natural Resources once a year. So I think all of these things add up to the notion that we should, I would recommend that we pass this tonight and just pay a lot closer attention over the coming months with an eye to determining later whether we want to engage in a full competitive rebid next year.
I think the, oh, go ahead. I was gonna say, I think Adam is looking for something like a, you're looking for something like a form that has some type of criteria. They've executed the criteria or not, gotten a grade or not, or whatever time there's something for evaluation and that it's, it's out there for people to see on a record somewhere.
Again, I don't want to extend it. My question wasn't to do anything about the contract, nothing. It was just that, it seems to me there is no objective monitoring. And from personal experience, I've been very suspect of what I've, I've heard. Seems to be done on a totally subjective basis. There is objective data on which could be collected, on which this could be based. And it seems to me it's another indication of just being concerned about tree health. So I would like as a resident to see proper monitoring of the contract.
Yeah, I, I think our question is about the contract, but I think the question about monitoring has also been taken up rights by the mayor's statement and perhaps.
But I just noted that you think you're taking action with no objective data on which to base it. So that's all. So I can go ahead, but so there ought to be objective data on the contract.
Well, can I ask a question? Does tree health of our tree canopy of the trees in the Garrett, Garrett Park owns? Is that part of the contracts? Does anybody monitor the tree health of our tree?
That, that is the arborist contract. Yes, that is, that is the scope of the arborist contract, yes. And then the, the, the three contracts we're looking at tonight, they have very specific scopes that they, they are given on a task basis. Either to plant or remove trees or to prune trees.
Right.
Or we're not using these contractors for invasive treatment, or are we at this point?
It, it depends. We have occasionally used Empire to do some invasive's removal, for example, on the former Yendel property. There is a separate agreement with a company called Reforest Maryland that has also done some invasive's work under the supervision of Mr. Normandy.
Can I move, make a firm motion, I mean, which would be that we approve this contract, that we put, play closer, closer attention to monitoring going forward and ask the Arboretum Committee whether to, their views on, on how this has been working with these companies and to move forward? Does that?
I'm not mayor.
But sure, the Arboretum Committee expert, so.
Yeah, I already stated, I think it's a good idea to ask the Arboretum Committee whether they want to make any recommendations for the next year's consideration.
Okay. So then let's do that motion then. Would there be a second?
I'll second that. I still want to.
What's the, now.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Chris.
What's the motion? The motion on the table is to
Have the Arboretum Committee.
No, no, the motion on the table is to extend the contracts.
Oh, the contract for one more year.
Are you, are you asking that the motion be amended? If so, make a motion to amend.
I don't think this action that, that Todd is proposing is an amendment to the contract. It is that we separately make a request of the Arboretum Committee, which I will happily do.
That is correct.
All right. Is there a further discussion? So the vote is on the motion to extend the tree service contracts for, for, for one year. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. The next the next piece of business is the road and sidewalk improvements project. Town Manager Matthews, if you could summarize the matter. Please.
Certainly, Mayor Keller. So on March 29th, Clark Azar and Associates, which many of you know has been our longtime civil engineering firm, posted the bid documents for what is entitled the Road and Sidewalk Improvements Project to the state procurement website, which is eMaryland Marketplace Advantage. This bid package, the Town Council as well, where encompasses several different capital improvement projects. They include replacement of the Waverly sidewalk from Montrose to Penn Place, reconfiguration of the Kennelworth Avenue, Argyle Avenue intersection that Mr. Altar touched on in his comments, installation of a speed bump on Wayma Street, which the Town Council authorized sometime in this fiscal year. I don't recall the exact date. A number of road paving projects and curb and gutter work as part of those same road projects where paving is occurring. All work according to the bid specifications must be completed by October 4th. We did receive eight bids. Included in your agenda packet is Clark Azar's evaluation of those eight bids as well as its award recommendation. Clark Azar has recommended awarding the project to Superior Facilities Management Services in the amount of $243,625.17. Of this amount, $56,198 is for the Waverly sidewalk component of the project and the balance of 187,427.17 is for the various road improvements. And I mentioned that just because it does impact how these projects get budgeted. We do have a separate line item for sidewalks versus road improvements. So staff is recommending, based on Clark Azar's recommendation, that the Town Council award a contract to SFMS LLC in the amount of $243,625.17 for the Road and Sidewalk Improvements Project.
So first question is, we gonna have anything for contingencies or?
So first question is, um, we gonna have anything for contingencies or because I think they're gonna find out when we get to my street that there's a bunch of problems. I know only because I watched them repave once, twice before, actually.
Um, we can certainly do that. What is currently in the budget ordinance um, for the road improvements component is just the, the straight um, dollar amount of the bid as well as anticipated cost for Clark Azar services uh, during construction. Um, for the sidewalk component of it, um, it kind of mirrors the same. It's the sheer cost of the bid plus Clark Azar. Um, you may have noticed that the actual amount included for the sidewalk project in the ordinance you'll be considering later this evening is actually a little bit higher. Um, that's because I did include some additional funding for um, the replanting of trees and, and also the more expensive component would be um, installation of lights on that stretch. Um, those were my best guesses of what those costs might be. Um, but currently there isn't a contingency. I would note that we do have some additional funds that are in the town account versus the ARPA funds. Um, so if, if the cost were to go over for some reason, we could always sort of charge part of it to ARPA and part of it to the town accounts for road and sidewalk improvements as necessary.
Okay, so that wouldn't require some type of ordinance then?
It would require a budget amendment. Um, well, the funds actually exist currently. They are, there are funds allotted in the non-ARPA accounts currently.
Right, there's, there's a can, operating contingency.
Right. I mean, we could certainly, when you get to the budget ordinance, council membership, um, you know, bump up those budgets if you'd like. That would require a little bit of rejiggering on the ARPA side because right now it's sort of allocated out to the penny.
Sure. Okay. Well, I'll move that we accept uh, Clark Azar's recommendation to go with Superior Facilities Management um, at 243,625.17.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the Clark Azar recommendation that we grant uh, the contract to SFMS, I'm going to use the acronym, in the amount of $243,625.17 is their discussion? Yes.
Yes. Yeah, thank you, Chris. Thank you, council. Um, well, I guess what this means is that uh, if there's a, a vote to move ahead, then this is all a done deal. Is that correct?
The Argyle Kennelworth.
Argyle Kennelworth. For example, I just heard, um, uh, I think you said, Chris, that we would readdress this later on. I wasn't quite sure what you meant by that, but uh, was that, was that your intention earlier when you responded?
That's now, that's now, Tony.
Okay, all right. Well, I guess what I'm, well, all I can do is say, uh, you know, I haven't seen really the plan or had a time to think about it. I know our neighbor hasn't, you know, they don't think it's a good idea, but I'm not, I'm not sure I can really speak for them. And uh, it's something, it's all news to us. And I think it's an egregious process that this council has set a very bad precedent for making decisions that affect uh, neighbors' driveways and uh, um, unintended consequences perhaps of decisions that the local people have had absolutely no awareness of, let alone input. For that reason, I would like to propose that this uh, vote be put on hold. Uh, I, I don't, I don't think this is a reasonable or fair process. I feel blindsided. Uh, I feel like there's never been any consultation of us as homeowners about this. Um, and the first time I saw this, I think it was Barbara that sent me the plans today. Thank you, Barbara. I saw them this morning. Uh, I think this sets a terrible precedent. I think the town, council would be well advised to not vote on this because it, it disen- uh, enfranchises the very people that you're elected to serve. I don't think this is the right process. I think it's been a pattern that's developed over the last few years, which I'm uh, hope, hoping will stop. And um, and that uh, you li, you know, decide to put this on hold. I think this is, and of the $187,000 that Barbara reported, I'm really curious how much of that money is going to be spent on reconfiguring this intersection. Uh, yeah, that would be nice to know. It's probably in the area of $50,000, $60,000 would be my guess.
I know. Each of the bidders was asked, um, they were asked to break out their bids into seven separate components, one of which was specifically the intersection of Argyle and Kennelworth. Um, the lowest responsive bidder provided a price for that component of the project at $14,930.63.
So Barbara, I have a question about that. I remember we asked to get the separate pricing for the components. Is there any provision in the scope of work that we published for us to potentially um, either pause or remove any component? Or would we be obligated to pay the full amount of the contract regardless if we changed our minds on one component?
Um, I would need to review that with Clark Azar. Um, I'm not sure. Um, that is certainly a question we could, you know, have them go back to um, SFMS. Um, in response to some questions that Mayor Keller posed earlier today, I did just want to share with you all that there are some different provisions in the bid documents that um, you all maybe want, want to be aware of in addition to the question you just posed. One is that no bidder may withdraw their bid within 90 days after the actual date of the opening of the bids. The bid documents also stated, however, that notice of award um, was envisioned to be issued by May 15th, 2024, and work must be completed by October 4th. Um, in response to a question Mayor Keller had posed to me via email earlier today, and I did have a chance to talk to Jason Azar, I think it would be reasonable to assume that if the notice of award um, is delayed until June, then the timeline for completion would need to be extended. Um, obviously, when you have any change in circumstance from a bid, and there's no way of knowing if this would in fact happen, but Clark Azar did raise this with me. Um, the next lowest bid, um, the second lowest bid is roughly $34,000 higher than SFMS, um, which they are obviously aware of because public bid tabulations are in fact that, they're public. Um, so it is possible if the framework for the bid changes that FSMS may come back and say, because we're not abiding by the time that was envisioned, that they're changing their pricing. Um, that speculation on Clark Azar's part, obviously, but they did ask me to pass that along. So I certainly think you all, if you are uncomfortable with including this provision of the project, you could direct us to um, award a bid with that being taken out, and we can see whether the low bidder is willing to accept that, or we would be obligated to pay the pricing. But we specifically asked for component parts to be broken out, but I just, I apologize, I can't answer your question this evening without going back through all the bid documents.
I'm gonna, I would appreciate that. I think Charlie's suggestion is, is very feasible. After all, you're in the driver's seat.
Uh, you're offering, you're awarding these contracts. And I'm not saying that we're against this, uh, I meant this modification. I just think we should have a, a a view on it and uh, maybe even help with the design. I'm not saying it's a bad design. But uh, I just feel like there should be community involvement in these kinds of decisions when it affects the local property owners.
Would, would a month be enough time?
Absolutely.
Okay, can we amend that motion then?
Well, let me say something. Sorry, Tony, but uh, this has been brought up. I brought it up several times. I actually went and talked to Ed, and that gave me a different read than what you said. So I'm not really sure, and I can go get you all the dates and stuff, but I brought it up. Then we ended up hiring a consultant, which I wasn't happy about, but we hired a consultant who basically gave the same damn drawing that I gave because I turned it over to Joanna a while ago. And at the end of the day, um, I know this thing has been brought because I brought it up in this room, actually.
Yeah, I, I, I was going to ask you, Phil, but I didn't want to put you on the spot because I remembered that you had spoken with a Shaw acre, so thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, but, but you see, I think there's a, a solution to this situation that you're describing. Um, first of all, the only time I heard about it was this, the other consultant group that made these recommendations. And as far as we know, that was just sort of, everybody that we talked to, and there was a large group here that was opposed to the recommendations of that first consulting group regarding Argyle and Kennelworth and, and the Montrose, is it Montrose and Kennelworth? Um, there was a very negative, and I thought that was the end of it. On the other hand, I think the town council could say, well, why don't we just make it a policy in general to contact the local, the owners that are nearby and let them know. You know, uh, a, a text message, an email, something, just so that we know what's going on. I see your side of it, but let's reach out and talk to the people who are involved. I apologize for not talking to you. Sorry about that. Um, but. No, no, I raise a fair point, but I'm just saying there's a solution that could, could help ingratiate the community.
Uh, I'm sorry to ask you to repeat it because I know I was late and so I missed your resident presentation, but what specifically is your objection, Tony, to this design?
Um, my objection is, well, first that we never were consulted, so we had no input. But secondly, I'm not even convinced it's going to improve the situation. I walked out there and looked at it. I looked at the plan that Barbara sent me today. Um, I'm not sure it's going to help. And thirdly, I think there are very inexpensive solutions that could be tried first. Cutting bamboo out that does block the sightline, putting a stop sign there. There is no stop or yield sign on Argyle. Uh, and putting a white stripe on the ground and uh, seeing how things go. That's a couple hundred dollars kind of thing. So that, that would be my approach and see how that works. And then if it doesn't look like it's cutting it, maybe this plan makes more sense. That was my main.
Tony also mentioned earlier, Gerald Lee, that there's been no accident and no issues in terms of safety for that intersection. So saying that this is going to make it safer is really not a good use of words because it can't be safer than zero.
Yeah, if I'm, I have been contacted by a resident who lives on Argyle, who has been tracking this issue, who, who has expressed concerns about the safety of the intersection. Um, so um, there's at least one person I know who has been, expressed some concern to me about it. I've sent the plans to her as well today because she had asked to see them.
Yeah, and I, I reject the notion that just because you haven't had an accident that you want to wait for the accident to happen. We've had fatal accidents in town and waited until after the fatal accident to act. And so I just reject that notion altogether.
I'm very sensitive about it too. I, I was the one on the town council that actually proposed and got awarded the 20 mile per hour speed limit throughout town. So that, and it unfortunately did take a fatal accident to finally get the town council to fall in line with my proposal. I've been there and, and, and yeah, you.
I hear you, and I, I'm really glad that, that you raised this tonight. Um, on specific note of the bamboo, the town threw a lot of close coordination, and I know Phil, um, and I both reached out to the neighbors there, the Shaw acres at that time. And the town went in and removed the bamboo of its own accord, even, you know, it is in the right of way, but it's not a town um, chosen um, planting there. And so the town has been maintaining the bamboo to improve the sightlines. But any of us who have bamboo in our yards know that that is a very temporary solution and requires constant um, removal process. So I mean, I, I would ask you to look at the design if we choose an extension of time and, and give it a, give it some consideration as a potential opportunity to reduce the potential of an accident at that location with fairly minimal um, change. And it is a pretty inexpensive measure. It's only $15,000, that component.
Lower than I would have expected.
Yeah.
So absolutely, we'd be happy to, I mean, a month, I think is generous and uh, we would, you know, I think this is essentially all I'm really asking for.
Can we amend the, I'm, I'm sorry.
I had a couple of comments, if I can squeeze them in.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, just, I'd like to thank Jerry Lee for bringing that up about safety. Um, just one thought on it, and I work as an urban designer, and that's pretty standard practice if you have an intersection like that, if you want slower traffic. You need to do a tighter radius, so it slows cars down from kind of, you know, winging it around the corner. Um, so it's, it's, it's a pretty normal thing to do. I, I don't think it would be successful to just put a stop sign, and there was history of the stop sign being removed, and then it became the suggestion sign and the stripe. But I think a lot of those things, they might work on a flat intersection with a tighter radius, but they don't really work there. Um, that spot is really exacerbated by a lot of people coming up the hill. Um, and I, I witnessed this, I, granted, I live on the other side of town, but I, I hate going through that intersection. Every time you come up to it, you have to kind of like inch forward, see past the bamboo, and then you have to kind of dart out, hope nobody's there. And then there's usually three, four cars parked across the other side, which a lot of jurisdictions, they will ban that across from a T-intersection. Um, I wonder if we should consider that. Um, it just makes it really kind of perilous to get across there for the, the cars. So I think if cars are trying to pay attention to that, it makes it a little bit harder to, you know, totally focus on pedestrian. So I, I hope, Tony, you could get a little bit more comfortable with change. Um, and I thank Phil also for bringing it up. I meant to ask the same question. I would, Phil went and at the previous mayor's request to go talk to the show workers um, and had that discussion. That was an integral part of it. I, I do agree with Tony. It should be something that's kind of like a um, like a permit, it should be all um, all the nearby affected neighbors should get an official written notification of something like that. Um, but then, I'm sorry, there's too many points, but this, this was discussed in council meetings, and it was basically one of the um, one of the changes that was proposed in that document that went out around on the town GPML and listserv. So it's, it's the same thing that's been discussed for a while. So it's not like it's a new thing. Um, so, you know, hopefully it can be, be clearer um, in the future. Um, and I guess just one last point is hopefully we can keep that bamboo cut down. I guess that the property owners there, they were resistant to it um, to kind of cutting it in that area. And there is a state law um, that you, within 25 feet of an intersection, you have to keep everything three feet lower just for that purpose to have visibility. So the town had to count, the town had to tackle that with the, the corner going into the school, because there's bamboo in that corner, and it was the same thing here. It's just even a little bit tougher because it's such a acute intersection. So with, with all that, I apologize for having like seven points, but um, I think there's just, there's a lot more to this story than, than it might have seemed. So, thank you.
All right, if I could summarize, there seem to be two essential categories of issues here. One is procedural, and there seems to be consensus that going forward, we need to coordinate more closely with immediately affected uh, residents. The other is substantive, which is whether we want to authorize this particular contract. There's a motion on the table to authorize it. The, the mover and seconder can withdraw uh, the motion. We then have the issue of whether we risk any financial change. They, they cannot withdraw their bid in, in its entirety, but if we go back to them with modifications, there may be financial ramifications to that. I am not confident that we don't run that risk if we wait a full month. And I would suggest that if the motion is withdrawn for purposes of this meeting, we talk seriously about having a special meeting. It can be brief, it can be virtual. It can be however you want to do it to minimize the impact on your time. But um, I believe we could resolve some of the issues with respect to talking to the immediate neighbors uh, in a period shorter than a full month.
Could I make a suggestion? Um, I know we've been able to do this with other contract authorizations. We could consider amending the authorization to be contingent on um, the town manager researching the art, the scope with the engineering firm to see if we could separate out that component, in which case we could continue on with the authorization while we're either pausing or having that component be optional so that we could take the time to decide if we want to keep it in or not. So check, give the, make the authorization if that flexibility exists. Um, but if it doesn't, then we would need to either have that temper, you know, um, emergency meeting or something to review our options at that time. So I think that could give us some flexibility.
Some, so that's an amendment to the.
That would be an amendment to the motion. Yeah. I, I just wanted to kind of get it out there. It was a, oh, an amendment.
Second.
Right. Well, all right. An amendment has been raised. Is there a second to the amendment?
Yes.
All right. Pause for a moment. Barbara and Kayla, Kayla, do you have sufficient information from Gerald Lee's summary of a moment ago to formulate an amendment?
Um, I'll just repeat my understanding and please let me know if I'm, um, if I don't have it right.
Essentially, it's a contingency.
Yeah, you're voting to award a contract contingent on the contractor's willingness to take the Argyle Kennelworth intersection essentially as an optional scope of work at the town's discretion. Is that correct?
Yes.
Or to modify, well, I'm going to ask, or to modify it because.
I'm not sure if you're taking it, well, if it's optional, I mean, what I imagine would happen at some point in time, obviously, we would have to write a, amend the draft contract that was included in the bid package to say that this is an optional scope of work. And then there would probably need to be some trigger mechanism by which the town made that decision. Because I imagine all the contractor, all the bidders assumed that there, there would be some logical way that they would lay out the work from a mobilization and demobilization standpoint. So, you know, we could basically, you know, first of all, gauge whether or not they're willing to accept a contract that has it as an optional scope of work. And then get a sense of their timeline when the town would need to make that decision. But I can't say that tonight until we actually talk to the contractor.
But is the idea of pausing that specific part of the contract to potentially redesign it and re-scope it, or are we going to just do it as it is described in these documents?
Well, my thought was that we would do some additional public engagement, especially with the nearby neighbors. And I don't think we know whether any redesign is required until we do that.
Okay. Yeah, I think it just needs to be understood that if the scope of work on which all the bidders bid changes.
Right.
Then that pricing is no longer valid. Essentially, you'd be looking at asking the contractor for pricing for change order work, assuming there's any substantive change.
Okay.
And if there's no design change, it will go through. If there is design change, that piece will have to be broken out and addressed separately.
Yeah, I think what would happen is you would not exercise the option to take advantage of the pricing that they gave us. They would have to provide new pricing based on a new design prepared by Clark Azar. So that would be a change order. And, and just as a reminder, any change orders would need to come back to you all because there is no provision for either the mayor or myself to basically execute a change order. So that would, that decision would need to be made in a reasonably good timeframe before the contractor would move on at some point.
So does, do we.
Sorry, go ahead, Phil. I'll follow you. I'll follow you, Phil.
Okay, no, so two things was, was there a notice to proceed or estimated notice to proceed published? That's first question. The second question is if we make this change, will that invalidate the whole bid process? We have to start from scratch or can we do that change?
What was in the contract, I mean, I'm sorry, in the bid documents was an expectation that, that notice of award would occur this week potentially. And the, the timeframe in which the contractor would have to do the work obviously was somewhat tied to when they expected to get notice of award. Notice to proceed was not mentioned. Obviously, once we have a contract signed, then Clark Azar and I would talk to the contractor to see how they plan to lay out the work. There's also a period of time after notice of award where the contractor has a certain number of days to provide their payment and performance bonds. There are certificates of insurance. So there is rough, I think that's a 10 day period after they receive notice of award.
Do they have to obtain permits as well?
Not for this work, no, because it's all on town streets. So we're the, it, through our streets. So there's no permits that are required from anyone.
That's helpful.
And would it invalidate if we make this change? Will it invalidate the whole bid thing or can we?
Yeah, I, I think.
Or can somebody file a process more or less?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's difficult for me to answer, though I think it's a good question, Phil, is obviously contractors have a certain assumptions that they make in their own pricing. In terms of what their profit margins are based on a certain scope of work, if the scope of work changes. And certainly this is a fairly minimal part in the grand scheme of what all they would be doing. I think the only way we're going to know that is to go back to the contractor and see if they're willing to accept that. If for some reason we find out that they're not. And then I think Mayor Keller's idea to, you know, hold a special meeting and figure out what you want to do from that point forward would probably be the way to go.
So I think, Chris, you were talking about potentially having a, a special meeting in the next week or two. Is that my guess or is that my guess at all correct?
I had advised Mr. Azar that, that I wasn't, earlier today, we had a phone conversation that I had a sense that perhaps contract award might not take place tonight and what did that mean? And that, that's when he basically outlined, you know, certainly that the time for completion would need to shift. We did not have any discussion about taking parts of the work and removing it from the project. And that's what I would need to talk to him about and he would need to go back to the contractor.
Can I ask a question? Barb, you had, you'd made a, a note that neither you nor the mayor has ability to authorize a change order. Could you put some clarity around that? Is that any change order or is that only on the initial bid or like, what if this, what if this contractor came in later and said they need an extra, you know, $20,000 for something they uncover? Is that a different kind of a change order versus now or are they all the same?
No, Todd may not, I'm trying to think if Todd was on the council when we were talking about our procurement policies. And I believe that was, I think you had just taken office actually. So it was a year ago this month, when we were kind of reviewing some of the kind of customary things you'll see in a procurement code vis a vis what's in the town, sort of informal, non-codified policies. There is essentially no change order authorization that is granted in our informal policies, which once again are not in the code. In my experience, Stephen, most procurement codes, as we've talked about before, are in fact codified. And it's, I would say it's more common than not to grant someone the authority to execute change orders at least up to a certain level. Because it's very common in construction that you'll run into something unexpected. But there is, there is simply no, no mention whatsoever of change orders. So when the town council awards a contract, you do it at a certain dollar amount, which is the bid amount. That bid amount obviously does not take into account that circumstances might arise during construction.
So then if there are change orders, bring it back to the council for approval?
That would be the typical process, but obviously if you have, whether it's a building contractor or a road contractor and you have them out there with a bunch of equipment and you tell them that they have to cease work, then you basically have dead time for which the town as the owner would be responsible for financially compensating them for that delay.
If, if it's just, but I, I can't imagine Mayor Keller would not be urging the council to codify that procurement policy. I, I had learned about it from him, like he literally talked me about it. So that's something we can get done. And then I just, it, it really threw me a little bit because I wasn't aware of that in there. But when we did the Safe Routes to School project, what, three, four years ago, 2021, 2020 into 2021, there were a plethora of change orders and the mayor at, at that time did not divulge any of those during her tenure.
Let's get back to the issue at hand.
And if I may though, related to the issue at hand and the change order, could we also, if we are possibly amending the contract before it's awarded, could we add a clause about authorization of change orders to deal with this? So that we are authorizing you and the mayor to make change orders on the spot if need be.
I think, I think the answer is yes. I don't see it as much of a contractual issue. Because truthfully, the contractor doesn't really care who, who authorizes it.
Right, but it could be a council authorization for the actions of the town manager and mayor.
It could be part of your motion. As I said, and I think it's something we can talk about when the procurement code comes back before you, but I'll give Tacoma Park as an example. And I'm not suggesting this is the way you all want to go. When I started there, they were about a year into a, a major building project. Their code already had this provision, but their code provision, it's a different form of government than it is here. Basically authorize the city manager to execute change orders up to a certain percentage amount that was in the code. Certainly, I think anytime you have a multimillion dollar building project and you're running into change orders. Yes, I had the authority to execute them, but there was also just kind of a de facto responsibility to report out at those. They happened to have town council meetings weekly there. So that was part of my standing report was to report out on any issues that arose during the building project and any change orders I had executed.
Probably shouldn't be hard for us to do. We have something similar set up with the procurement in general where there's certain authorizations for lower dollar amounts, medium and higher dollar amounts. I would, I would guess it could be the same way with change orders once further codified that, you know, things are unexpected or brought up and construction could be handled in the flow, but major changes really need to have a light shined on them.
We, we can look at that, but.
Yeah.
We should vote on this.
Great.
I have another question. Have the people on Waymouth been told where the speed bump is going to be located? Have, and that been are going to be affected by this?
I'm trying to remember. I mean, Waymouth becomes an engineering issue, just as many of these things are. So there are, we're not obligated to follow county standards, but there are generally accepted transportation engineering standards of where you put a speed bump when you have a hill for, for safety reasons. I, I don't recall from, I believe that information, Lisa, was included in the Grove Slade report that was published both on the town website and also via the listservs. So if someone looked at that, they would see where the recommendation was for the speed bump.
Okay. So there were, okay. There, there were a number of residents the night that we approved the speed bump from Waymouth who attended. But perhaps we could send out a special, like informal notification now that we're getting close to action.
Yeah, I can just send out the sheet from the big package that shows the specific location where it'll be.
Thank you. And I guess my last comment is once again, do we have, what do we need to do to get the lights selected? Figure out what they cost and get them ordered so that we can get that done in the trees that are going to be replaced on Waverly. So the project, all the components.
The trees have been selected, so that.
Oh, good. Right.
We're discussing the lights tomorrow.
At, for, with the council, with the committee?
HBC, yeah.
Okay.
Anthony Walls and.
Right.
I.
Okay.
And Brian Mizuguchi.
And then we'll know the cost and whether they're available.
Well, maybe a few more days before we know the cost and availability.
And just for clarification, the lighting is a separate contract, correct?
Right.
Yes, it is separate.
But she doesn't, she just made up.
Yeah, it's separate from this contract. I did just put in a plug number when you get to the budget ordinance, just kind of my best guess of what lights might cost and the number of them that can physically fit in the space.
I'm just trying to avoid keeping the, the site under construction over and over and over again. Okay, thank you.
All right. The motion is to amend the original motion to accept, rather, award the contract to SFMS. Let's have a vote on the amendment with, which essentially attaches the contingency. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, I, I hate to, I hate to ask, could you clarify what the contingency is? Like, I think a couple of things were discussed. The idea was that, or maybe, maybe you should state it better than me.
We will do two things. We will approach through Clark Azar. We'll find out whether addressing the Argyle Kenilworth component of the bid will affect either the start and finish dates or the dollar amount. At the same time, we will pursue with the immediate neighbors better consultation on the substance of the engineering proposal.
Okay, I'll, I'll accept that. I'm just, I'm concerned it's going to delay and affect pricing, but I'll, I'll go along.
That, that's why I suggested, that's why I suggested two, two weeks instead of one month. All right.
Yeah, right.
What's now on, what's now on the table is the amended motion to award the contract to SFMS. Is there any further discussion? All right, I will call for a vote. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'll, as Barbara noted, we'll we'll include looking at the, at the Waymouth speed bump, just to make sure the neighbors are aware of that actual location as well.
Thank you, Chris. I think Tony did raise a great point that it probably should just be a set policy, any kind of changes that people get a reminder of, of what's happening.
Yeah, thank you, Stephen. I just wanted to finish with it and then I'm going to leave. But I think, I want to thank you all. I think this has been a very gratifying experience that you've all taken these comments into, into real action and, and are, and responding to them. And I thank you very much. He's been a very productive spirit and I think maybe setting a new tone for the council under Chris Keller's leadership. I want to say one last thing, as long as we're on the topic of Argyle and Kenilworth, and this is just on the side, but I've noticed in the winter time, we're talking about safety. I'm very concerned about one thing in the winter time. We have, when the snow was there, then all the kids and adults are lined up at the very top of Argyle. There are often cars parked on the other side of the street, making it essentially like a one lane or lane and a half thoroughfare. I'm very concerned that at some point there might be a slippery condition where a car might actually slide into Argyle and actually hit these people at the top of the sledding hill. Something maybe we should all.
I need to interrupt. If I had a dollar for every time the sledding hill has been discussed in the 44 year, and here we could.
Okay.
We could buy a ski dump.
I won't say anything more, except that there's a very simple solution. That is to prohibit parking on that other side of, of Kenilworth when the sledding hill is in operation. Then there'll be plenty of room for cars to get by.
Take it under advisement. The next item is adoption of ordinance number 2024-3, authorizing the Historic Preservation Committee to appoint adjunct members. Barb, could you summarize that very briefly, please?
Sure. So back at your meeting in April, you introduced ordinance number 2024-3, which would amend section 400 of the town code as requested by the Garrett Park Historic Preservation Committee. If adopted, this would authorize the committee to appoint no more than three individuals as adjunct members. The adjunct members would not be able to, eligible to vote and would not be required to be Garrett Park residents. When you introduced this ordinance back in April, you included several revisions to the ordinance as initially presented. One was an addition of a three-year term for an adjunct member, inclusion of language about the ability to remove an adjunct member. That remove, mirrors the language for removing voting members. And that the HPC would recommend adjunct members, but the mayor would approve the appointment. I subsequently conveyed that information to the town attorney. He made some tweaks to the ordinance per that direction and that modified ordinance is in your agenda packet for your consideration for adoption tonight.
I have a question.
Wait, let's get it on the table. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-3, authorizing the Historic Preservation Committee to appoint adjunct members. Do I hear such a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
It's moved in second. Is, is there discussion?
So I have a question because I had my notes that we were going to make a change and I'm going to have to use, so if we look at, call it page three, all the way at the very bottom, and it's paragraph seven where it's bold and underlined. Now, it says an adjunct member may be removed by the mayor. And I thought that that was supposed to mirror paragraph number three above it, where it's bolded by the mayor with approval of the town council. So I'm just asking, am I wrong or I'm asking, like, council, fellow council members, maybe I am wrong on that?
I, I think you're right. In other words, that the.
The mayor, with the approval of the town council, then we can insert this, the same language on the paragraph seven.
Yes, exactly, exactly what I.
With the approval of the town council, Barb.
Right.
So you're amending.
So you're amending that motion.
Correct.
Yes.
So, um, uh, hard, hold on before we, uh, fully amend it. So Phil, um, my notes are not as good as yours, but my memory was that it was that the mayor may appoint with the approval of the count, town council, but I didn't remember for the, um, for the removal. But I see that at the beginning, I was wondering also about the appointment, um, which doesn't state that part. I think it should be, if we're going to add it at the end, we should add it at the beginning as well.
Agreed, yeah. Good point, very good point. Agreed.
Okay.
Uh, the whole point was it was all the committee members would be the same adjunct or not.
Right.
Collection.
Right.
Yes, agreed.
Except that.
No need for anything different.
They didn't have to necessarily reside in Garrett Park, right? That was the distinction drawn.
Correct.
Okay.
So the amendment would be to add with the approval of the council, both in the first line of paragraph seven and the last line after mayor.
Agreed.
Correct.
Yes. Uh, did the staff capture that?
Yes.
All right, is there a second to the?
I'll second.
Second.
To the set, to the amendment?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Uh, do the original mover and seconder of the primary motion accept those amendments?
I do.
All right. And the seconder?
Yes.
Okay, then we don't need to have discussion of that as a separate issue? Is there discussion of adoption of ordinance number 2024 dash three as amended?
I do have one additional question. I had a resident ask me, and this is really more of a question for Stephen. Um, is it contemplated that these adjunct members might ever need to, um, travel or, um, undertake any expenses that the town would want to reimburse? Um, because we have that provision for regular members, but we did not add that provision for these members.
That wasn't discussed, but I don't, yeah, that wasn't discussed, but I, and I don't think it's the intention either.
Okay, I, I didn't think it was the intention, but I just wanted to double check that the committee hadn't, um, perhaps considered that. And in case we wanted to add it, but I don't think we need to add it. It seems unnecessary.
I don't think so.
I want to double check.
I would, I would venture a guess that the committee doesn't realize it could travel, um, expense, so.
Right.
I didn't even know. I've been on it for 11 years, so.
Right, and we have the option of virtual participation that could be worked out. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote on adoption of ordinance number 2024 dash three. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
All right. Um, I, I would just make an observation. Um, the historic preservation committee is the smallest of the, um, ordinance established committees. And that among many other reasons is to permit it to, um, perform its business relatively quickly because sometimes it needs to do so in response to a council request or a county historic preservation commission request. Um, and this is just to allow the committee to have the benefit of other expertise and yet remain small enough to be, I believe the currently preferable term is nimble. Uh, so we did not want to expand the size of the committee as such. Two further observations. Number one, um, the adoption of the additional language tonight means that we now have different standards for different committees. I think it's of no consequence in the short term, but if and when the council considers an omnibus uh, recodification, might want to standardize the so-called adjunct member language across all of the ordinance established committees. Um, the other observation I would have has to do with vacancies unless, Stephen, were you going to address that later this evening?
Um, no, I.
Okay.
Actually, no, I didn't have it in my, my notes, but that's a great point. We do have, uh, we do have to refill your seat on that committee.
Yes.
But I thought you were going to announce that later.
Okay, uh, well, let.
Or, or if now is correct, no doubt.
It's really just an observation. Um, I will need to vacate my seat on the committee. We have another regular committee member whose, uh, term will be up within about a month. So we will advertise, we will publicize the availability of two spots on that committee, um, at some point in the coming weeks. All right. Let's move to adoption of ordinance number 2024 dash four, which is an ordinance adopting the capital operating and ARPA budgets for the year beginning July 1st, 2024 and ending June 30, 2025. Uh, this is the fiscal year 25 budget. Um, as is always observed, municipal budgets are an important reflection of what we consider our priorities and values. Uh, they're also fairly complex and we are required to adopt them by ordinance. The adoption of ordinance in turn is constrained by various terms in our charter. So although it may sound procedurally picky, we're going to have to proceed tonight in a fairly careful fashion, uh, to adopt our budget for the coming fiscal year, which begins July 1. To begin with, I would like to entertain an ordinance, uh, a, entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024 dash four as introduced. That would be as introduced at the last council meeting. Do I hear such a motion?
Motion to proceed and, uh, pass the, uh, ordinance 24, 2024 dash four as introduced at the last meeting, but hopefully to be amended.
Fair enough. Second?
Second.
Uh, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the, um, the budget as introduced one month ago. Now, I would further observe that that introduced ordinance was the product of a council work session as well as the, um, April meeting. Later in the month, the council held a special council meeting, the minutes for which were adopted earlier tonight, which resulted in further, um, potential changes to the budget. And I would now, and, and those, the results of that meeting, together with other refinements and changes, um, that the town manager has prepared are captured in attachment two to the town manager's circulation of, uh, the budget, the proposed budget last Friday. We now need to move to amend the ordinance as it was introduced last month to reflect those changes. Do I hear a motion to amend ordinance number 2024 dash four as introduced?
Chris, may I just ask a procedural question?
Yes.
I'd like, even though we have the written summary from the town manager, it would be nice to have a brief verbal overview of the major changes, just to help the public who are listening in to understand the scope of the changes. Was that your intent to do that after the amendment motion or should that be done before the amendment motion?
Yes, as soon as we get it moved and seconded to amend, the ordinance is introduced. I'll ask Barb to summarize what those amendments would entail.
Okay, and that doesn't exclude further amendments after that point, correct?
It, it does not. It simply packages this in such a fashion that we can talk about it as a comprehensive ordinance, uh, proposed ordinance.
All right, thank you. In that, uh, in that respect, then I move to introduce the amended version of the budget ordinance as, um, proposed by the town manager.
And I'll second that.
All right. Do the original mover and seconder of the first motion accept the amendments as friendly amendments?
Yes.
All right. We now have a single document before us for consideration. I, uh, earlier I asked Barbara to prepare that, um, so that we won't have to wade our way through the entirety of attachment two, and you should have it in front of you. Um, that would be the ordinance that you would be considering. And now I will ask Barbara to summarize those changes, please.
So this will be a summary. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, but in a nutshell, as proposed in attachment two, total revenues would increase from $2,115,101 to $2,476,336. Um, below on the screen, I've broken down where those changes are coming from. So the largest change is because we were awarded, um, state legislative bond initiative funding for the town hall project after you all introduced the ordinance on April 8th. Additionally, as I had mentioned at your, um, April 25th meeting, I did one more pass through of looking at where we are year to date. Um, so I am recommending an increase in the projection for prior year carryover, increasing that from 110,000 to 132,000. Additionally, on April 25th, you awarded a contract to Ecology Services um, for our trash recycling yard waste and large item collection. Um, part of that contract award was to, um, not stick with the original assumption, which was, um, all curb side service. You elected to go, as you know, to rear yard, side yard for trash, curb side for everything else, which did change the pricing. Um, as a reminder, on the revenue side, um, this is essentially a pass through to, um, residents, basically through the household assessment that appears on the real property tax bill. And lastly, based on recent reports from the Federal Reserve, there is no indication whatsoever that they are planning to, um, reduce interest rates in the near future. Additionally, we did get our, um, first earnings statement from having moved more money into the Montgomery County Investment Pool, which is doing exactly what our accountant and I hoped, which is yielding more revenue. So I'm recommending that investment earnings be increased from 75,000 to 100,000. Are there any questions about that before I move on? Um, very few changes on the operating expense side. Um, strictly the only change was to recognize, um, the change in the ecology contract scope of service to rear yard, side yard. On the transfer side, and this is where, um, probably some of the largest changes come. Um, basically because of the state grant that we got for town hall, as well as the proposed adjustments in revenue, that would increase the total available to transfer to capital from $550,565 to $897,565. Almost the entire, the entire change in the transfer is attributable to going to the capital budget. Um, there's two aspects of that. One is the, um, money that is actually going to, uh, town accounts, which means that the funding is unreserved or unrestricted in any way. Um, that increase is basically 224,581 to 271,581. Transfer to other reserves was originally 250,000. As a reminder, this is a state grant that is specifically restricted to the former Yendel property. Um, transfer to other reserves would go up from 250 to 550 to reflect the, um, $300,000 in state LBI funding that we were awarded. Anything? And then lastly, um, and, and Mayor Keller, you may want to go into more detail on this as during the discussion, but, um, total capital expenditures, uh, were assumed to decrease from 1.48 million roughly to 1.31 million. This is because the bids came in much lower than anticipated and below the engineer's estimate for the street and sidewalk improvement project that you awarded a contract for earlier this evening. Um, additionally, I am recommending that certain projects that were originally envisioned to be paid for with town funds, um, instead be switched to ARPA funds. Um, we do have an obligation deadline by December 31st of 2024. That may seem far off, but it will come up quickly. And I tried to go through the capital projects, um, that you all reaffirm support for through the kind of Garrett Park cash exercise on the 25th and tried to look at the ones that staff felt confident that it could basically have either, um, finished or basically have under contract or a purchase order for by that December 31st deadline. And I, as you go through those, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Um, for the town hall project, funding was added, um, basically due to three components. One was with some of the projects that were originally anticipated to be paid for with non-ARPA funds now being paid for with ARPA funds that obviously freed up some money. Um, so that funding, um, you know, was allocated to town hall. Additionally, there's the 300,000 in state LBI funding. And lastly, through your Garrett Park cash exercise, which was obviously an individual prioritization, but it was clear that you would like to see more funding going to town hall. And then there were there's some, some cleanup, cleanup activities in attachment two, such as moving 55,000 from kind of town hall design up, up more to the construction line item. So for town hall specifically, um, basically as proposed, you would, um, if these changes are accepted, you would be allocating $935,777 to the town hall project, which is account number 27.2. And that's all I had to share this evening. Be happy to answer any more detailed questions, but that's the broad brush overview of what's happening.
Uh, thank you, Barbara. And before we go to discussion, let me just say that, uh, the, the budget process is always complex and it always puts a, a fair amount of burden on the staff to find out information projecting, uh, revenue and expenditures. I think this year, because there have been more moving parts, it's been a more fluid process. And I very much commend the staff for all of their work. And I know you, the council have done a lot of work too. This is the fourth, fourth meeting at which you've been discussing in one fashion or another FY27, I'm sorry, FY25, getting ahead of myself. Um, budget. So I, I appreciate all that. So we now have before us 2024 dash four for adoption. Is there any council discussion with respect to the approval of ordinance 2024 dash four for adoption?
Um, I, well, I've got at least a question anyway. Where does it show how much, um, things, some of these accounts end up? For instance, I'm looking at the contingency. I'm not a hundred percent sure. What is that number? There's amendment, what's amended to, but I don't know, um, or what we end up with.
What line item is it?
So I'm looking right now at line 33.
So the negative 67,000?
No, if please look at, if you could look at a pulp attachment two, I'm just pulling out a calculator, um.
Sorry.
Yeah, look, please look at attachment two. So the unobligated funds in the contingency account currently are 298,518.
Right.
I am proposing that you basically remove 223,518, which would leave $75,000 in contingency.
Okay. And that is based on the. And that is based on the exercise we did.
Candidly, you were all, all had very different ideas about how much should be left in the contingency.
So what was your method of choosing 75,000?
That there's barely a capital project that you, if there was a problem and we unexpectedly needed capital funding, there's very little you can do that, that isn't probably in that range. Certainly, if you want to take it down more, that's your prerogative.
So we wanted it that low?
Some people, some people wanted it lower. Yeah, and I'll see if I can.
I'm okay with 75. I'm just saying.
I'm just gonna see if I could find the, the exercise and you all.
Just two, two observations. First, to clarify, we're talking about the capital fund contingency, line 33.
Yes.
Is that 33.0?
Yes.
Yes.
So that would be a change order as an example, correct? Like if there was a, like a $50,000 change order on a big project. So that's certainly in the realm of possibility. 75, I wonder if 100 is not safer if you have multiple projects going on?
Yeah, if I may, so I'm looking at the, the result. So basically, one of you wanted 50,000 left, one of you wanted 40, someone else wanted 50. There were two of you who wanted 100,000. To answer Jerely's question, candidly, I added all that up, divided by five, and it comes out to roughly 70,000. I just rounded it up to 75. Yeah, it came out to 68 and some change. I just thought that was an odd number, so.
Okay.
And so along those lines, I'm looking, I know that you, I'm assuming it's just a plug number that you put in for the work to the pool wall repair, I think it was other public spaces, which is 29.1.2 at 35, I believe.
Yeah, so if, if I may just walk you all through that. So originally, the 35,000 for the pool wall repair failure, correct? That was 35,000. When you all discussed this previously, and, you know, I do want to acknowledge this is a scope of work that is based on a scope of work that I'm still not sure whether you all are comfortable with or not. But basically, the reason I was taking money from that line item was because this project is anticipated to be paid for with ARPA funds. So if you look at attachment two and you go down to 35.3G, other public spaces, that project was moved there. Because I do think that's something that we could reasonably get done by December 31st. Which once again is the, the Treasury Department deadline for obligating funds. The reason I didn't strip everything from other public spaces is we do need to have an evaluation done of the grotto structure. I do think there might need to be some work, and I wanted to leave something in other public spaces in the event we needed to do some work on the grotto structure, because that's still a question mark since we haven't had it assessed yet.
So what I was going to propose, which I know may have some people don't like this, but I was going to propose that for item 32, 32.6 other, which I know is Cambria Park, that we consider moving all or most of that to contingency. So we could grab it back if we needed to, but on the other hand, we'd have enough contingency available for either this pool or for change orders for all the streets and roads.
Yeah, so the, the money was left in Cambria. Just, I'm looking at the exercise. So this was probably one of the few items where there was not unanimous support for, but it was a majority. It was three, a vote of three to two, not really a vote, but an indication of prioritization of three to two.
I think it's important to note on the Cambria that there was a design number just held there. And the idea, this is fiscal year that starts in July and runs until next June. So the idea is if ideas can coalesce in that time, then that could be moving to a, a contract. I, I, I find it constantly shocking, the major misunderstandings about how design and budgets and things like that work in the town. So it's pretty simple concept, I think. I think something similar on town hall, it's important to note is it's not realistic now in May, mid-May of this year to have to be able to break ground in fiscal year 25. And it's really, realistically, it's a fiscal year 26 issue to be able to be doing construction work on town hall. So I, I would, again, extremely caution everyone about this. I, you know, it's kind of the rush to just throw every, every part of the piggyback at town hall. I think we need to continue to look at, as it gets designed, trying to right-size the cost for that. The estimate was up over 3 million. It's staggering for the, you know, the type of use that is and the size of that building and so on and so forth. I think I got some ideas and we can, in the next couple months, like try to see what we can do to bring it down to a more rational cost. And I think that'll make a lot of other things easier. So, so just, just two things about the, you know, the timing of design contracts, wanted to get in there.
All right. And just to remind everyone that capital, capital appropriations do not lapse.
Yes.
Correct.
In other words, we can reallocate if needed later on as well. For example, I mean, any money in the Cambria account, we can, can shift it.
Put it back again.
I have a question, Barb, related to that line item of town hall. Is the $300,000 anticipated grant from the state? It would, is that part of that 900,000?
It is. It is. I went back and looked at the application that I filed. I actually have, Department of General Services is waiting for me to fill out information for the grant as a follow-up to the award. But yes, it is part of that. I went back and looked at how I had described the project in the grant application. We did allude to design and construction. And so my thought, excuse me, is that we would probably try to tap the state funding first. Since there, it's not immediately sensitive to spend it, but the state does give money to people in the hope that it will actually move things forward. So.
Okay, thankful. Thank you. So that clarifies that it's an additional increment of 636 777 of town funds and the 300,000 is the grant portion.
Correct. So what I was trying to do is if you look down at the ARPA account, the 35.2, where I was reallocating the, proposing to reallocate the funding currently allocated to town hall. I'm in the interest of expedient, expediency and getting the funds obligated. So the way I would, kind of in my own mind, looked at the roughly 936,000, Jerely. I backed off the 300,000 for the grant. I backed off the four, roughly 466. And then said, how much is the town, how much new funding is going in? That wasn't kind of envisioned. And that's roughly about, I think it's my math, right? I think it's about 200 and some thousand dollars.
It's about the amount we're taking out of contingency.
Pretty much. Very close. Yes.
So just, what's?
Sorry, go ahead.
What's the, what's the total that we have kind of set aside now and for town funding? Plus the state 300K, plus the ARPA funding that's kind of been held that will be shifting back? What's the grand total that we have? Kind of figured for town hall at this point?
Yeah, if you agree with the changes that I proposed in attachment two, it would leave roughly two, it would be $2 million would roughly be what the town has in funds for town hall.
It's just, my opinion, I think that's a very, a very solid number to work with at this point. Because again, it would be working all through fiscal year 25, trying to figure out the design, the, the design fees won't be more than 20% of such a total. And then see what we can do to kind of right-size that budget so we're not, you know, just throwing everything at it. And it's a valuable asset, but it's, it's not everything to all residents in town. To the point where I, I think a lot of people would be upset if we had a catalyzed town hall, nothing else.
I would like to just throw in, if I may, in agreement with Stephen, that hopefully we, we won't spend more going forward. I mean, this, for this year, that, that's a good maximal number in that we got some outside funding thanks to the great work of our, of the, the manager and, and the former mayor. But that we should try and not go higher than what we've already allocated, especially in consideration that we have in the planned out capital plan moving forward, a large expenditure in 2029 on streets and curves, which, I mean, we don't want to eat away. I mean, I don't, I'm not sure how we're gonna get that money. I mean, we, we have time to worry about it, no doubt.
Just for purposes of clarification, we're talking about the FY25 budget. And while we should certainly keep our eye on these longer term things, you've had that for the last three meetings. Let's keep in mind, this is, this is a budget. It's like, like a household budget. You may meet budget, you may not. You may spend less than you've budgeted. So is there, we, we have the amended 2024-4 for adoption. Have any of the issues that have featured in this most recent discussion risen to the level that you need to further amend what you now have in front of you?
Well, I, I would like to propose an amendment then to move all or most of the $60,000 in 32.6 in the contingency.
From Cambria Park Design?
Right.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there a discussion?
I strongly oppose that.
I, I would like to leave at least some of it there so that we can start to get an idea of what we want to do with that space. It seems that there was some support for that.
So what, no, I'm fine with that. What are, what are you proposing?
We can start, I, I suppose, I mean, I don't, I don't know how, what the 60,000 is exactly to go to. It seems like if we had an initial study, an initial assessment of neighbors and residents and what they want.
Well, and that's why I, I'm in support of Phil's amendment, because I think, I think it will take us about a year to do our own groundwork to have a better sense of what we would ask a contractor to do. And then we could either at the mid-year or at next year's budget have a more informed decision about how much to set aside, because we'd have a better sense of what our intention for the Cambria Park renovation is based on some public engagement activity that we might undertake on our own before we ask the contractor to come. And that's what I was envisioning when I.
That's, I agree with you.
So could we, could we formally pursue that engagement and then postpone the budget until next year?
That would be my proposal for right now.
Or at least until the mid-year budget amendment.
I, I would strongly oppose that again. I can tell you, I've worked on these kind of things in so many jurisdictions. I, I don't understand what, well, I kind of know what the intention is behind blocking it. But it's a pretty normal thing to get community outreach to kind of figure out what's the general realm of things that would be asked for. And then you do a study to get somebody, a professional to kind of say, hey, the town is kind of thinking things in this basket might make sense. And then they do an additional study. It's exactly what I did on town hall when we had a charrette. And it's, it's pretty normal. It's not, it's not 60,000, it's not enough to jump ahead to throw full engineering services. That would be multiple times that. So that was sort of the intent is that, I mean, if, if we can't coalesce on some ideas for that place to do a $60,000 study on conceptual issues, which I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, everywhere else I've ever worked on, it's pretty normal stuff, but Garrett Park is just not normal. And this, this is a great example of where Garrett Park is not normal. I can tell you, it's just not even, I've never seen anything like Garrett Park on these kinds of issues. It's really unusual, so.
For purposes of tonight's purposes of tonight's necessary action, Stephen, do you think that $60,000 is needed in the immediate steps at Cambria Park?
Sorry, Mike, I missed on my mute. Yes, but not in the next couple of months. I mean, it could be in the second half of the fiscal year. So I, I don't understand, other than a political issue, like why would it be necessary to move that $60,000 versus, you know, something else? I'm just, I'm really, I, I've run out of ways to describe it. I've never seen anywhere that works like as inefficiently as Garrett Park does on these things.
All right, point noted. Is there any more discussion on the amendment to move?
Well, the question was how much, I think, right?
I mean, I, I would, I would agree with, if we can either do all or nothing. That is to say, if we're gonna move the money, I, I don't know. I mean, if Steve says, I think you referred to it as a nickel study, the 60,000, but I, I mean, I don't know how much they cost. It seems like more than a nickel, but.
That was not a nickel. I did, I must have been unintelligible when I was saying that, but it's just a conceptual study. Which is basically what Weedman did for town hall. I think it was a little bit more than 60, but Cambria is less complicated than that. And by Cambria, I mean both sides of the pool.
It's a big site.
So I think, yeah, but it's, it's really, I, I've done these before. It's not, it's not, maybe a little bit more than 60, but I think it would be in the realm where you could do a really good conceptual study with site surveys and everything else for $60,000. So I think if, if, I don't think there's anything wrong with putting something in there for the second half of the fiscal year, just to hold it, kind of prod that process along. So I did so much work to prod the process along on town halls. I'm kind of tired of hearing about that. And then to hear that we should, you know, have this, this unnecessary, like, blocking of any kind of movement on Cambria. I think we owe it to our residents to, to study these things and move things forward.
I agree.
Well, I just want to clarify, Stephen, I don't think either Phil or I are proposing to block movement on Cambria Park. We're proposing a different approach, which would be to gather more information in terms of the public interest in what kinds of changes we want to make before we invite a consultant in to assist us. That, that's my thought about it.
And I would agree. And I'm also thinking about how much this town can stomach, if you will. We've got to go through what we're gonna do with this building. And I think that there's gonna be, at some point, there's gonna be a lot of discussion, because we have to all agree to some extent on what the plans are gonna look like. And I think that there's just gonna be a lot on our plate and to think about hiring a consultant this early. I mean, we can, I'm suggesting putting it in contingency, simply because if we don't need it, we can put it back again.
How about going with half as sort of a compromise, so that we're making a marker that we want to undertake some planning related to Cambria Park. But I, I also, if we're going to do that, I think we should go ahead and list the park so that it's not confusing as to what the purpose of that funding is.
Can create a new.
Agreed.
Or just parks, park planning, something. We could keep it generic.
That's fine. We had, yeah, we had town hall planning that way, but it's just, yeah, it's just, it's a very normal process to do that, where you get broader, and I've done so many projects like this. I was usually delivered the, the broad ideas of what the town was looking for, and then you develop some ideas with a professional lens on how it could be done. Usually you end up surprising the community with more this potential than they might have imagined. And usually people are pleasantly surprised, pleasantly surprised, so. I think that's a pretty good thing to do. I'm really not taking no for an answer on it.
Don't we want to do Cambria kind of in the same vein of what we're?
I think, I think it's a great point. I think Yendel should have been done the same way. There was never really a, you know, any kind of like open public charrette on that one, same way we did on town hall. And that's kind of what I'm, what I would suggest for Cambria is to get ideas out there and have it open to all 365 households of what, what the potential is there, or what the people have interest in, in doing over there.
Well, I was happy to see our new mayor.
I would do it on both, so.
Our new mayor is proposing that we reestablish this Parks and Open Space Committee, which would be a good place for some of this community work to happen on a conceptual basis for both Yendel and Cambria.
And, and that's a good point. I mean, with Yendel, we have, that's one more project that has to be looked at from the town, because nobody's really done anything. We just conceptually said it's going to be a quiet space, but what that means has not been nailed down yet. So it's again, another reason why I'm thinking we could afford to put some of this over in contingency.
All right. I, I would just observe, Yendel comes with legal constraints on what we can do there.
And money that we got.
Yes.
And, right. What's on the table? What's on the table is to transfer the entire $60,000 in line 32.6 of the capital budget into line 33 contingency.
How about if we, if I would suggest a generally proposed moving half of it?
Right.
I'll go with $30,000 transfer.
Okay, this isn't an auction. Make a motion.
This could be, we move that there be a transfer from area 32-6 of 30,000 to the additional, to the contingency fund, which I guess would raise the contingency fund to 105,000 and lower the money for other, which essentially is a Cambria Park study, lowers that to 30,000. That is the motion.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm opposed.
Barbara, can you poll?
Yes, Councilmember Eisenstadt, we're trying to get, make sure we have.
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett?
Yes.
Councilmember Max?
Aye.
Councilmember Schulp?
Yes.
Councilmember Puskowski?
No.
All right. The motion has carried so that the transfer would be reduced to $30,000. Now, the base will, I will ask, are there any other amendments to ordinance number 2024-4 for adoption?
I have an additional amendment, which is for that line item 32.6 to rename it to Parks.
One point of clarification, we, I would need to probably go back and see what has been charged there because if you rename it, Parks may not be emblematic of what has been charged to that account before.
I'm reconsidering that at the mid-year then. Thank you.
Any further amendments? All right. We are voting on adoption of ordinance number 2024-4, essentially the fiscal year 25 budget, as just amended.
Yes. Oh, we're voting, sorry. I thought you needed another motion. You don't need another motion.
No, no. Is there any, is there any further question? Is there any further discussion? All right. On the motion as amended, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That concludes action items. We move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business?
Hold.
Chris, clarification? I'm sorry.
Stephen Puskowski, did we get his vote?
None of us heard Stephen.
Stephen, what was your vote on the motion?
We can abstain too, right?
I couldn't find the mute. The motion was to pass the budget as amendment, amendment, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
I'll say yes, I'll say yes on that. Strongly opposed to the language of the discussion earlier, but I'll pass the budget overall. I hope Garrett Park can do better in the future.
All right. Is there any unfinished business? Hearing none, we'll move to new business. It's customary, well, we are required, if we take one month off, to give one month plus a week notice. So we typically take the month of August off and to comport with that requirement, we usually consider it in June. Is there anyone who wishes to consider a different approach this year? That's a long way of saying, does anyone want to consider taking July off? All right, we'll put it on the agenda for June. Scheduling an organizational meeting. It's customary to have an organizational meeting shortly after each year's election. I know you had a retreat less than seven months ago. If I promised to keep it to issues that weren't covered at your retreat, would you be available for a brief organizational meeting sometime within the next two to three weeks? Barbara would circulate a scheduler in the hopes that we could find a mutually convenient time. Any discussion of that?
I'm available.
Okay.
I'm available, but June, like, is a little, a little bit better for me than May, if that works for others.
All right, well.
Yeah, I would agree.
I'm available until about June 12th.
Okay. I will devolve, I will devolve upon the staff the unenviable task of finding a mutually convenient date. I just, I, I think we need to make sure we're on the same page in terms of how we want to go forward. And for a rather graphic example, I was laboring under the impression for the last 15 minutes that we were talking about Cambria Park, which I consider the wooded area behind my house, whereas in fact, I think over time, it has come to be understood to be the entire stretch of town-owned land from the western border of Councilmember Schulp's home, all the way to the back of my own, what is at some point referred to as the Cambria complex, which sounds like an industrial site. So one, one thing we can do in that little organizational meeting is agree upon, this will sound trivial, but I think it'll help us in the long run just sort of work a little more efficiency, efficiently if we can agree on something similar as equal, as easy as terminology.
But, okay, but, but this isn't going to be a full-blown retreat, right? Where we take a day off of work and all of that? This is a two-hour, I mean, what, what do you envision for this? What's the scope of this?
Deciding how we'd like to proceed in a variety of ways. One of which will have, I mean, I'm the presiding officer at council meetings. That's one of only three express authorities I have under the town charter. I would like to do so in a way that gives you a little more assurance that you'll be home by 10 o'clock on these evenings. It seems to be already a foregone possibility for tonight. And as, as, as you've seen, one way to do that would be to bring a little more structure to the way we consider formal actions. But I'd really like to discuss that in a little less formal fashion in an organizational meeting. We'll also revisit council assignments and so on.
Priorities.
I, I don't see it taking more than an hour or 90 minutes. I would certainly try to keep it to that.
Great.
We're not going to revisit large concepts like capital expenditures and so on. All right?
Chris, before we move on, I just wanted to clarify, it sounds like we're looking at dates in June. Is that correct from what I heard? Even say, and Todd say, I also wanted to know, are we only looking at dates when Town Hall is available? Because that will certainly narrow the field of dates just because of the classes that are held.
I was wondering, could it, can it be, can it be virtual? And I, I think I'm not as worried about needing June if it's going to be less than 90 minutes or 90 minutes or less, but if it's longer, June would help me. I think Phil said it would help him, so.
Our, our council meeting is June, in, in June is the 10th.
June 10.
I would like it to be no later than the week of the 3rd.
Excellent.
Okay, so I will potentially be traveling, so a virtual option would be appreciated.
All right.
Can we try and do it as a hybrid meeting?
Why don't, why don't, why don't we assess not only available dates, but preference for the nature of the meeting? Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm more and more open to May if it does help a lot of other people. And I, I, I'll throw it out there, I wonder, is it something where a physical meeting could be in town office like we had done on some things in the past, including budget meetings, or is that not an option at this point? If Town Hall's not available.
Barb, can we meet in the town office space?
Yeah, I mean, we're limited to the office and also since it's a public meeting, we have to make sure there's sufficient space. If it's in the evening, there won't be, there won't be equipment buzzing during the day. It sounds like you're in a dentist office sometimes with 20 drills on you. So we could try to do it in the town office. We would just probably need to figure out how to set up chairs. That would not be a, we would not be able to offer a hybrid meeting because all that equipment basically is tied to here. I think if you're wanting to have a hybrid meeting in the event that someone is traveling, this is certainly a much better space. But I, I acknowledge that the dates are more limited here.
Okay.
So we can just kind of, do you want a 7 o'clock start time, a 7:30? Open to both? Open to both?
7:30, yep.
7:30.
Okay. We will look at the calendar and put together a doodle poll and get that out to you all within the next day or two.
May I ask, is there any option there? Are people open at all considering also the 8th and 9th as options, not necessarily the chosen dates? Those are weekend dates, just to throw in the mix.
Or how about the last week in May?
Yeah, the evening, the last week in May.
Yeah, that would be good. Weekday evenings, last week in May.
Do that. Again, yeah, I can do it, Phil can do it, so.
Yeah, I could be in person if you did that.
It starts with a holiday.
It starts with Memorial Day, that's correct.
Right, yeah, not Monday.
Right, and, and there's a, there's a class in Town Hall on the 30th. Kayla does yoga.
About the 39th, 28th, or 29th.
The 28th is tentatively a yoga class date. We are still waiting for confirmation from the instructor what her upcoming dates are. We potentially could be in here on the 29th. I am flagging that as potentially without having access to the reservation calendar right now.
But we're just trying to get a, a wider swath of possible dates then, at least. Because I'll have a time change issue as well that we can, the 3rd.
The 29th is good for me, or the 30th.
Can we adjourn? All right, so, so everyone is amenable to having as brief as possible an organizational meeting and the staff will nail down the date and location. Is that, is that what I've heard?
Correct.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Reinsatement of the Parks and Open Spaces Committee. Long-term, I would like to see that committee established as one authorized by ordinance so that we'll have some consistency. But for the time being, I am reestablishing the Parks and Open Spaces Committee as an ad hoc mayoral committee. And appointing for an initial round of appointments, the following individuals, Jack Mandell, Jean Haran, Susie Welker, Naveed Nakui, and Pat Maloney. At their initial meeting, I will ask them to consider whether the committee would benefit from a larger number of members. And we will also discuss at the organizational meeting, council liaison, and other issues having to do with the relationship between the town administration and the committee.
Can we ask just about the establishment of the committee and the naming of those people? Was there a process for this?
It's a mayoral committee, there's no process specified. I'll tell you why. I've had over 20 years' experience with Parks and Open Spaces Committee. My personal preference, my personal opinion is that it can, is that it can be valuable. I had experience when I was on the council, I had experience when I was mayor, and in the periods between, when I was just another resident. But I don't think that that committee should be dependent on the personal preference of any given mayor, long-term. If, if, if anyone else has a similar sense of what Parks and Open Spaces could be and feels that it should not be subject to the sort of yo-yo governance issues that it has been lately, they can introduce a motion to establish it as a committee by ordinance. But for now, it's just a mayoral committee, and I think there's a benefit in getting it up and running and reestablished promptly.
Yeah, I wasn't questioning the need to have it. I was questioning just the selection of the members. I mean, it just, we just discussed a very extensive process to get people on the historic commission, and this, this doesn't sound like it is as, as extensive. Certainly, these are all people who, I guess, have served in the past, I know have strong interests. I'm, I'm just curious. I mean, it, it would seem that it would serve the community to, to have that information. And maybe you're right, maybe we can create an ordinance.
Yeah, I couldn't agree with you more, Todd. And I look forward to your introduction of a proposed ordinance to establish the committee on a permanent basis, at which point.
Fair enough.
There would be procedures that apply.
Okay.
My guess is, and it would certainly be my recommendation, that if the committee feels it could benefit from additional members, that would be publicized through the listservs and so forth. Okay, I, I have nothing further under new business. Does any other council member have new business to bring forward?
Yes, very briefly, we had discussed looking at revision of the charter, you looking at a range of amendments. And it would seem that this, we didn't want to do it during the budget season, but it seems that this might require some public hearings and discussion. I just wanted to lay this out there for consideration so that we start scheduling this. I suppose I would, I would bring forth some possible amendments to start with that we would then discuss and, and sort of consider, based mostly on just discussions internally. But I, I think it will take probably a few meetings to get, I mean, to, to make sure that these are as many as, as people want and that all issues are being considered. So I wanted to raise that, and I suspect that perhaps we should start putting it on the agenda for July. I mean, I, I would, that's what, I, I'm just anticipating this for people so that it will fit into your, into your schedules, is that?
As part of the regular town council?
Yes, yes. If anyone has.
Yeah, I think that's a reasonable timeframe to have an initial discussion.
And if anyone has burning changes they would like to suggest, please let me know.
You might consider putting a post out on the listserv to solicit suggestions as well, since. Since, um, you know, we're finding that the town council meetings don't, and the minutes from the town council meetings don't necessarily elicit, uh, public input.
Let, let's have our discussion at the next monthly meeting. I wouldn't, it, this is just, this is just my suggestion. I hasten to add. Um, I wouldn't put it out on the listserv just yet until we decide how we want to proceed. Uh, charter amendments, in my experience, have varied. The, the process to reach charter amendments have varied tremendously. The last one in 2017 went by so quickly that I didn't even notice it. There was a major effort, uh, right around 1999, 2000, 2001, I think, that, uh, took nearly two years. I wouldn't wish that on anyone, but the notion, the notion is it, it, it can vary tremendously. So let's discuss how we want to approach it in June. Uh, before we put it out, before we solicit, the residents rewriting it.
That sounds like a wise idea, although we eventually want to solicit public input. But I will, I will have a, a list of possible, I, I will have a starting point list that we can go, go from at that point. And then we can add and discuss what else is needed. We can look at the document and proceed from there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Well, we'll, we'll hold off on the public input. Like, be sure to get it late. Thank you.
Right. Any other new business? Uh, town updates. On the agenda, we have Historic Preservation Committee. Stephen, did you, did you have anything beyond the thing I stole from you about vacancies?
Uh, yeah, I did have some notes and I appreciate it. I would, I'll, I appreciate you, um, um, said it well with that before, but I have some updates I just pulled over. I'm driving, so. Um, some updates from Nancy Walls, the chair. Um, she had a report on the Chevy House tour. She said about 200 people explored and or hosted eight homes. Um, HPC, HPC and Archives collected $2,036 in ticket sales, which has been donated to the Archives Oral History Project, a fascinating repository of the town's history, in her words. Um, the committee's had, had a couple of meetings, um, conversations about the Waverly sidewalk. I just messed up my photo that has this. She was noting that, and again, like the committee's discussed this a couple of times, the hop was approved, leaving some waves slash wiggles in the design. HPC had, whoever had recommended to the mayor and council that the curvature of the sidewalk should be a gentle arc without any waves to aligns with the street, um, possibly, uh, making field adjustments to do this. Um, Waverly lighting, uh, she just, she just noted that there was still the pending meeting about, um, selecting lights. Yeah, so I, I, I strongly support the sentiments of that committee on, on the sidewalk. I, I'm not sure where the curves came from. Um, I think the ones, um, from a historic preservation standpoint, the ones on Oxford were completely irrelevant to good sidewalk design. I'm not sure why they showed up, but they literally showed up hours before that, um, crew was going to pour. I would, I would strongly suggest that the, the Waverly, um, sidewalk be done in kind of concurrent, concurrence with the original William Saunders Street Plant that had more gentle arcs versus the kind of arbitrary arcs. So it's a long way of saying, I, I kind of, I concur with the committee. And I think there's ability to relook those things and get that sidewalk design well as a field change, um, in the contract.
Yeah, if, if I may, I just want to bring to the mayor and council's attention. We were required to get a historic area work permit for the Waverly sidewalk project. As part of that application submission, we submitted an alignment that reflected the, the slight curves as directed by the town council. If there is a desire to change that, then we will need to go back through the historic area work permit process. And that will further delay, um, we, we should not sign a contract basically with, um, SFMS if there is a desire to revisit that because we would need to basically go back through historic area work permit, and that requires getting on a commission agenda. So if there's an interest in that, I suggest you resolve that this evening before I go back to SFMS.
Yeah, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't square with what happened in the safe house, the school project that went through multiple levels of, um, county and state review and was changed to, to a degree I've never seen on any project as far as the percentage of the areas involved, like, just so many changes. So I, I think it could be pretty quick for the county to, to deal with that hop on this, so.
Well.
I'm cer- certainly happy to ask. I'm just saying the alignment was actually part of the application submission, and it is actually attached to the historic area work permit approval grant.
We'll explore it. Stephen, I'm reminded of my childhood when I was told on numerous occasions that two wrongs don't make a right. Okay. Are there any other town updates from any other council liaison?
I guess for Archives, I just want to know, I think the Archives committee would like to be involved in the selection of the candidate to replace Claire. And I think Barb, we're working on.
We have, yes, we have interviews later this week. Um, originally, the committee chair was scheduled to be part of those interviews. Um, we ran into some scheduling availability, so he has tapped Karen Thiel, who was a former chair of the committee to participate in his stead.
Thank you.
Um, if I may, I'd just like to remind everyone, as, uh, we announced last month, and, um, I think has gone out on the listserv, that there will be a tree walk, uh, sponsored by the Arboretum Committee on Sunday, May 26th at 1:00 PM, meeting at Penn Place with the, uh, town arborist. Hope you can join us.
You're going to put that on the list?
It may or may not have gone out today. Maybe, maybe I saw the draft.
Website or something.
Yeah. There, there will be posters posted and some additional.
Councilmember Bennett, I do have the information from the committee chair that email did not go out today as we were doing meeting prep, but that will go out tomorrow.
Great, thank you.
And I would observe that those tree walks are always a source of, a lot of good information. And there, it might be an opportunity to gain insights into why it takes so long for our contract tree services to adapt to our unique tree maintenance needs. Okay, any other town updates? All right, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, I just want to apologize for flogging you this evening. We'll, we'll discuss how we want to conduct council meetings going forward at our organizational meeting. And, um, but I, I do, I do want to do it in the context of trying to get us all out at or before 10 o'clock on the, uh, second Monday of every month. Is there a motion? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Bye.